I'd like to introduce Barbara Graziano, who's worked on the demographic enrollment projection study for us. This has been a process we've been working on for several months with a great deal of factors forth, and I think we have some interesting results, so with no further ado.
Thank you, and thank you for having me this evening. I'll start off, am I coming across, well, okay. I'll start off by just giving you a little background about the Office of School Planning and Research at Western Suffolk, OCE. We've been doing long-range planning studies since 1985, and during that time, we've completed more than 1,000 studies for districts, not just on Long Island, but also in Westchester, Rockland, Orange, Putnam, and other New York State counties. Some Nassau County districts that we've recently worked with include Garden City, Bethpage, Plainview, Old Bethpage, Herricks, Levittown, Jericho, Lindbrook, Farmingdale, Franklin Square, Picksville, and Merritt. Now, you might wonder what is involved in a study. Well, we research a lot of demographics. Okay. Oops. We research a lot of demographics, starting with births. We obtained from the New York State Department of Health birth data for the county, for the town, as well as for the school district. We also research housing. We look at historical housing turnover within the district, numbers of homes sold year to year. We also analyze the median sale price within the district. In addition, we contact local agencies, governmental agencies, to find out if there's any new housing being planned within the district that could impact enrollment. We also research population trends, and not just whether a population is increasing or decreasing, but we also look for changes in the ethnic structure of the population of the district, any changes in the age structure. We also look at other characteristics, such as the number of schoolchildren per household, rental versus owned households, and so forth. And then we look at non-public school enrollments, see whether, as well as charter school enrollments in some cases, to see whether perhaps any schools have closed, so that those students might be returning to the district, or any other trends in non-public school or private school enrollment that might impact the district. And then we analyze enrollment trends. We look at trends over the past 10 years, and included in that, we look at, we analyze migration trends from grade to grade. So, in other words, does the district tend to gain students as a cohort moves from one grade to the next in the following year, or does a district tend to lose students? For example, not unusual for districts to lose students in transition to ninth grade, as those students sometimes leave a district to attend private schools. So, anyway, we develop ratios of those trends from grade to grade. Usually, we work with a three- to five-year ratio that then we use to project a grade level enrollment going forward. And the last on there is birth persistence analysis. This is what we use to project kindergarten enrollment. We compare kindergarten enrollment, the number of students enrolled in a given year, compare that to the number of births five years prior, and again, we develop kindergarten birth ratios. And we will use, usually, again, three-to-five-year ratios that we will use to project kindergarten enrollment going forward. This is just a list of some of the research sources that we use. Of course, we get a lot of our data from the different branches of the Census Bureau, the American Community Survey, American Fact Finder. We also get data from the New York State Education Department. We get our birth data, as I mentioned, from the New York State Department of Health. We find, we get housing data from the New York State Office of Real Property Services. We also research data from the National Center for Health Statistics, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Pew Research Center, and we also use district data. I'll start with demographics, with the population. This just gives you the numbers of the resident population of the Baldwin School District. And you can see that between 2000 and 2010, the population grew by approximately 440 people, or 1.4 percent. And then between 2010 and 2015, there was an additional increase of 1.5 percent, or about 486 people. Just to give you some comparison, in Nassau County, there was a smaller increase between 2000 and 2010 of four-tenths of a percent, and then a similar increase between 2010 and 2015 of 1.6 percent. The next slide shows you the age structure within the school district over the period from 2000 to 2010, and then 2014. As you can see, the preschool or under age five segment has decreased. It's approximately 5.7 percent of the population in 2014 compared to 6.7 in 2000. And this is what we're seeing in most districts, that there is a smaller percentage of residents in that preschool segment. The school age, or five to 19, segment has remained somewhat stable. However, if you move down to the young adult, 20 to 39 age segment, you can see that that has decreased compared to 2000. And that's significant, because this is, of course, the segment of childbearing age residents. However, again, as we're seeing in almost every district, the 40 to 64 segment has increased. And that's, this is a national trend, and it's a trend in the state and on Long Island, that in general, the population is getting older, and again, smaller percentages of younger The next slide shows you the ethnic structure within the district. And again, there have been changes here. As you can see, the white segment decreased significantly between 2000 and 2010, while during that period, the black and Hispanic segments have grown. And then between 2010 and 2014, the white and black segments remain somewhat stable, while the Hispanic segment continued to grow. The next slide shows you some household characteristics within the Baldwin School District. The top half of the chart shows the percentage of households with children under 18 years of age. And you can see that the Baldwin School District has a greater percentage of households with children in that age range compared to Nassau County. And then if you look down the lower half, you can see that the number of public schoolchildren per household, again, is greater within the school district when compared to Nassau Next, we'll take a look at births. Births nationally, in New York State, and in both Nassau and Suffolk Counties, has been decreasing. Over the 20-year period shown, births in Suffolk decreased approximately 22 percent and approximately 21 percent in Nassau County. And this trend seems to be continuing, although more recent, in the last year or two, births have leveled off. And that is, and births are expected to, most experts feel that births will kind of plateau now, going forward, but at this lower level than we have seen in the past. And there are a number of reasons that experts are indicating is behind this decline in births, particularly since the recent recession, when young people were perhaps having trouble finding jobs, and, or maybe they were able to find jobs, but lower-paying jobs, and therefore, many would continue to live at home. Also, many young people are graduating with high levels of student loan debt, so again, they're tending to live at home longer than they had in previous generations. So, because of that, they, many young people have been delaying marriage, and therefore, childbearing, and so, and quite honestly, I've seen it too. A lot of them just don't seem to be in any hurry to get married and have kids. So, there's sort of been a whole cultural, sociological shift there that has impacted The next slide shows births within the Baldwin School District, and again, there's been a drop-off here. If you look between 2000 and 2009, births were over the 350 mark in each of those years, and even into 400, the 400 mark. However, beginning in 2010, you can see that births have dropped to a lower level, and during that period, births have ranged within 292 to 337. So, again, that's reflective of the trends that we're seeing in the state and in both Next slide shows housing sales within the district. As you can see, the, over this historical period beginning in 2006, 2006 was by far the peak sales year, when 526 units were sold within the district. And you can see that subsequently, there was a dramatic drop-off in housing turnover. And then through 2008 and 2012, it remained at a lower, housing turnover remained at a lower level. During the last three years, by the way, 2016 data is not yet available. That, for some reason, Nassau County is slow to post that data. But if you look through 2013 to 2015, housing, the housing market has been improving, although you can see that it has not returned to the level that it was at the peak in 2006. And again, this is very similar to the housing trends that we've seen in many of the districts that we've worked with, is that after, you know, the housing crash, things are starting to look up, but they're, in most cases, not back to where they were before the crash. This slide shows you the median sale prices within the district, and again, 2006 was the peak year of this period, when the median sale price was slightly more than 450,000. And it's dropped off, dropped down to a low of 315,000 in 2012, and as you can see, it's coming up again. In many areas of the country, the median prices have returned to pre-recession levels, but in most areas on Long Island, that has not yet occurred. So, again, Baldwin is reflective of general trends that we're seeing. Next, we'll take a look at enrollment. This slide shows you the enrollment in Nassau County, which you can see during the historical period, there was a decrease of 3.8 percent, and we are estimating going forward that enrollment will continue to decrease, although not as significantly as it has been during the past years. This shows you enrollment within the Baldwin School District. Enrollment peaked within the district in 2007, when there were almost 5,400 students enrolled in the district. And then, but subsequent to that, enrollment declined. Over the 10-year historical period, there's been a loss of 743 students, or almost 14 percent. During the next five years, we're projecting a smaller loss of approximately 270 students, or about 6 percent. Just to note, in the study that we did, we did projections 10 years out for this presentation, though I've only included the first five years of the projections, because once you get beyond the five-year mark, the projections really become less and less reliable. Obviously, trends change, things happen that none of us can predict at this point. So, that's why this presentation focuses on the next five years. The next slide shows kindergarten enrollment. And kindergarten enrollment, of course, is reflective of the birth trends. Historically, over the last 10 years, enrollment, kindergarten enrollment ranged within 254 to 361 students, and was about 300 students in five of those years. Going forward, kindergarten enrollment will be relatively stable, although at a lower level than it was in many years of the historical period. We're projecting that enrollment will range within 271 to 292 students during the next five years. The next slide gives you the actual numbers of the enrollment change. You can see during, during the last five years, the most significant decline was in the elementary grades, with a loss of almost 19 percent. Smaller losses occurred in the middle grades, almost 13 percent, and in the high school grades of approximately 8 percent. Going forward, during the next five years, we're projecting that the elementary enrollment will basically remain stable. There will be a slight loss, but, like I said, it, it's, the elementary enrollment will be leveling off. The middle grades will see a loss of 93 students, which is really not significant over five years. And the high school grades will see a loss of 130 students. So, what is happening is that as some of these smaller cohorts move through the system, the high school grades will continue to see those losses, while, like I said, the elementary grades enrollment will level off. And a couple of factors that are impacting the enrollment are that the district will lose students through displacement, as smaller kindergarten students are now coming in and replacing those larger cohorts that are moving up. However, even though the overall district will lose students through that displacement, the district does gain students in transition to most grades, so that will minimize some of those losses through displacement. The displacement is shown on the next slide. As you can see, in 2015, the district graduated 396 12th graders, and then the following year, 268 kindergarteners were enrolled, so that was a loss of 158 students to the district that year, I'm sorry, 128 students. And then going forward, the displacement will range, losses will range between 77 and 136 students per year. The next slide shows the enrollment by, for each elementary school. And as you can see, there's a couple of the schools are expected to gain a small number of students by 2021, while other schools are expected to show slight losses through 2021. So, overall, as I mentioned before, the elementary numbers are projected to main, remain fairly And if we look at how that impacts the sectional needs within the elementary schools, you can see that three of the schools will need the same number, are projected to need the same number of sections in 2021 as you have now in the district in those schools. Brookside is projected to utilize two less sections, while Steele is projected to need one additional section. So, again, this stability is reflective here, in that basically, the, there won't be much of a change in the sectional needs. And just to summarize, enrollment has decreased by 743 students during the last 10 years. The elementary grades saw the most significant declines, while smaller losses were recorded in the middle and high school grades. Smaller district losses are projected during the next five years. Enrollment in the elementary grades is projected to remain relatively stable, while the greatest declines are expected in the high school grades, as those smaller cohorts move up through the system. District losses will, through displacement, will occur as smaller kindergarten cohorts replace larger graduating 12th grade classes. However, these losses will be minimized by gains in grade-to-grade migrations. And that's about it. Any questions?
Well, I mean, I first want to thank you for this report. I love looking at numbers, so this and the full report was just so much great, great information she's lacking, because it's true. And there's just, there's just so much here, information and helpful, very helpful information for us as we make our decisions going forward. I want to open it up to see if any members of the board have questions. Start down there.
I hope that we have an opportunity to have ongoing discussion meetings, it's the first time that I, you know, you already had to see the presentation and the numbers, and I think, you know, we need some conversation going forward, definitely, as we build by building, and, you know, staff-wise, and, I mean, this, as you said, is very important information, and I think it's going to really impact a lot of the decisions we make, both with program and staffing and facilities as we go forward. So, have questions? I just want to have a question.
Okay. Anyone?
I'm sure.
Oh, okay.
I have to have a process.
I'm in the same tone, same train as Mrs. O'Hagan. Lot of numbers, lot of information. And again, I agree in that it will definitely inform our decisions moving forward. We've had conversations with some community members, who, you know, this information kind of contradicts a little bit as to what, you know, is hap, you know, happening now. So, not to say that things can't change. I mean, it's not a definition as good, but, but it's very interesting information. So, I need a little time to process.
I know. So, thank you, this is very helpful.
You're welcome.
I'm a numbers person, so I'm, still am so excited. Going to page nine.
In my office, the people think we're weird, because we get excited about numbers.
Yeah, so on page nine, I just want to process, to make sure, really quickly, show the public school children per household increases between, increase between 2010 and 2014 for Nassau County, and also increase, well, de, the decrease in terms of Baldwin.
You're looking at the number of public school children per household?
Yeah, the bottom section.
Okay, yeah. It remains stable in, in the county, and a decrease in Baldwin, right?
Okay. And then on the last page, when you summarize, enrollment has decreased by 743 students, and I know you said it somewhere, but I just want to make sure. The enrollment decreased in Nassau County by 700, or was that specific to Baldwin?
That, that's Baldwin.
That was Baldwin, correct? And what was it again for Nassau, the enrollment? And I know it's different places, but just one. It might have been, like, 15 or something.
Yeah, 15 is the, yeah, it's the chart.
I'd have to go back there.
In the last 10 years, yeah, throughout the 10 years.
Yeah, there's a specific number, but.
Yeah, I don't have this specific number on here.
Okay. I hope you had that obtained.
About 7,000. About 7,000, please.
I can get that for you if you, if you want that.
And if someone is interested in this kind of stuff, seeing what happens, what continues to happen, let's say, for housing, so that would be, you would say, how often is this type of, if I just wanted to see how the sales are going, that's in Baldwin in terms of housing, would I just reach out to the Department of Housing for that, or what's the best way to do this?
The data that, that I presented is always housing turnover.
Right.
There is a website, a New York State website, you'd have to set up, like, an account.
An account.
Sort of an account, yeah, with a password and so forth, in order to access that data, which I don't see why you couldn't do, but it's not a website that you could, that you could just go on without having that, having your, an account set up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, I was curious, one of the statistics, where we talked about on average, the district gains students in progression in some grades, this was on slide 19. I'm just wondering what accounts for that? So, it looks like we lose in some grades and we gain in some others. Was it really specific to Baldwin that you could speak to?
Yeah, it varies from district to district. It really is a combination of housing factors, you know, if, generally, if housing is on the uptrend, then we tend to see more, an increase in the migration ratios as children move into the district. If children are being lost, which we're not seeing in the elementary grades here, that means they might be needing to go to non-public schools. But generally, I would say that here, it's probably reflective of the fact that housing in the last years has been increasing, and therefore, more people are starting to move in again.
Is there anything in your analysis, sort of any, are, is Baldwin similar to, you know, the situation here with enrollment decreasing? I mean, I, we see that across Nassau County, enrollment's been decreasing. Is, is Baldwin outside of the norm of other similar districts, or kind of?
No, actually, it's pretty, it's pretty much standard compared to most districts that we've been working with. We have seen in the last couple of years, some districts that are starting to see some gains, but those are districts that have kind of unique demographic makeup, such as Jericho, Syossett, we just finished Herricks, where they have kind of a sizable Asian population moving in, and those, and in fact, when I was talking to someone in Jericho, he said they have people calling directly from China, asking about registering their kids in the district, and they're buying houses on the internet site when they're seeing. So, like I said, we are seeing some increases in districts like that that have kind of unique circumstances, but... kind of unique circumstances, but, um, overall, I'd say Baldwin's is pretty typical of what's happening out there.
Um, there was something in the, the, the full report, um, that you guys did, yeah, just with respect to the, um, that North Meadow pocket.
Mm-hmm.
Which was in the revised report that we got. Um, I guess the numbers were, kind of, those students in that pocket were just split evenly.
Correct.
You know, the projections were based on, oh, we split them evenly among, uh, two
Yes, just for the purposes of the analysis, we just.
Right.
Split them up evenly.
Okay. So it, it, it wasn't based on, um, the capacities of the, you need to look at the capacities of the building and say, that building maybe has more.
Yeah, no, because, we do not, uh, I, you know, we don't know what the capacity of the buildings are, that would entail a capacity analysis, which we do, but, um, that was not part of this analysis.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, we just, like I said, just for the sake of, of, um, sort of, uh, a, a study that, you know, just to analyze it, we just, um, split them in half.
So that's something that we wanted to.
Yes, we do, we do facility studies where we go into a district, we, we tour every school, uh, we look at the usage of each room, the square footage of each room, and then we develop a capacity, um, and then, uh, we pair that with the enrollment to, um, give you what the utilization rate would be of each school, based on their projected enrollment.
I just want to, um, point out, so on, um, slide twenty-two, where, um, where Barbara looked at the sectional needs.
Mm-hmm.
So, the, the only place where we see an increase is in Steel School by one, and the others just either stayed flat or went down. Um, the issue that comes out with Meadow Pocket is, um, the division of Sunrise Highway. And so, if we were to consider the Meadow Pocket, what we would have to consider are kids who would be heading north and crossing Sunrise Highway. That's, that's the issue, guys.
And just for those out there in the audience, please, this is, we have not had conversations about shifting the kids from the North Meadow Pocket, please don't start breaking out. Um, it was just an analysis, we just, you know, you go, hey, what is that? Um, we have not had conversations about that, so that is not in the plan. If you read that on Facebook, it's not true. Uh, okay. Another question? Okay.
So, so what you're saying, um, Dr. Kenny, so looking at, was it the fire page?
Twenty-two.
Well, then, yeah, twenty-two, so Steel has, well, twenty-one, really. They show Steel having a loss of two, right, which is pretty much saying it's flat, but yet, no, no Steel. Steel shows a lot negative two?
Oh, okay.
So why would there be an increase by one?
So it's probably the slate of second graders and third graders, where the, where the ideal split is at twenty-five or twenty.
Okay.
So that loss of two is two over six grades.
Okay.
Above. Right, over six grades. So then that would.
Which would have affected, so that's what you're saying, would be the lower grades that would probably, right.
So the district, for example, if there are more kindergarten kids coming in, and less second graders going to third grade, you would have more of a need down to the, you know, the, the lower class side than you would in the upper class side.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, well, given what we've heard, and may ask, may ask you to come back, but, once folks have questions in the future, so, uh, but thank you, uh, for coming in.
You're very welcome. Yeah, any other questions? Your call.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move forward. Yeah, all right, we're all kind of out of order, so just want to make sure we got that done. Okay. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on May seventh, uh, March seventh, and, and March eighth, two thousand and seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mail. Moved by Mrs. Reed, sent by Mrs. O'Hagan. Uh, are there any questions or comments?
I'm at, um, there were some corrections made? Were there some corrections made? In the middle was one.
Uh, it was, uh, so it's the minutes as amended? Well, that's correct. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I still, I'm, I'm still a person for second, I just want to make sure exactly.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the treasurer's report for the month of February two thousand and seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mail. Almost. Moved by Mrs. Reed, sent by Mrs. Cool, I got everyone in on this. Uh, are there any questions or comments? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna turn the meeting over again to our superintendent.
So we, we, um, have had a lot of activity in the district over the last month and a half. Um, some of the good news, we had teachers and Mr. Bray from Plaza School present at the Lila Conference, which is a Nassau County conference of English, of English instruction. Uh, I was there, and it was extremely well-received by other districts in the county, so kudos to them, because it takes a lot to get up in front, in front of your colleagues from other districts and share the kind of amazing things that are happening, um, in, in our district. Um, we've had some, uh, great visits to our district. Um, Dr. Amy Sickel, who is the superintendent of the Abington, Pennsylvania School District, came to visit us. Um, she was, uh, treated to a visit to the high school, to Steel School, um, and to Plaza School, where she's about to see our instant action. And I'm proud to say that she was going back to Abington, which is a fairly wealthy community in, in Pennsylvania, with, um, ideas and, um, ways to replicate the things that she saw involving, um, in her district. So that was a really nice visit. She's also a past president of AAFSA, which is a national organization for school administrator. We had a second visit in the month by Regent Roger Tillis, along with the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Aaliyah, which, um, was quite, quite a feat for Baldwin, and, and, um, really a very proud day. She had an opportunity to visit the high school, we had a fairly narrow window, we had that two and a half hours, which was a stretch, because she was really only supposed to be here for two hours, but she had two and a half hours where she had the opportunity to, bless you, to visit the high school, to tour some of our redesigned learning spaces, to meet and see our academy students, and to hear from the panel of our students about their experiences in the academy. Um, following her visit to Baldwin, there was a meeting of, um, college presidents, superintendents, and other, um, personnel of K to sixteen, where she was a keynote speaker. And I will tell you that I lost count on the number of times that she mentioned Baldwin, and the number of times where she said words like, um, Baldwin is a statewide model for what field should look like. And that is, um, that is quite a compliment coming from the leader of, um, K-12 and all the higher ed for the state of New York. So, it was a really, really good day for Baldwin. Day, uh, yes. Um, we, I'm proud to announce that we received the Green Cleaning Award from the American School and University Magazine, so kudos to Russ Randazzo and his staff. Again, it's Baldwin leading the way, um, in, in good practice, uh, and sharing that practice with, with others. Um, if you did not get a chance to see Hairspray Junior, I'm just telling you, you missed why it's an event. Uh, you have never seen middle school students poised, and, I mean, they were just phenomenal. You could not believe that you were sitting in an audience, watching middle school students. They were really just amazing, so, if you missed it, shame on you, but you will have another chance to see a production next year. Um, we have our Budget Roadshow set, so, um, they are Steel School, Steel Plaza and Lenox are all on April twenty-fourth, Steel at seven, Plaza at seven-thirty, and Lenox at eight. Um, Brookside School, uh, on April twenty-seventh at seven, High School May first at seven-thirty, Middle School May second at seven-thirty, and Meadow School May fourth at seven o'clock.
Just, those, those are during the PTA meeting, so, that will hopefully be them.
Mm-hmm. Um, you might have seen around the district, we have two school resource officers, and those are Nassau County police officers, they're both named Anthony, so they are, they are very warmly termed the Anthony's. Uh, they are in our district and in our community, and the reason they're here is, um, for no other reason other than to support our schools, to develop relationships with our kids and our teachers, it is all positive. So if you see police cars around our school buildings, it is what we would remember as kids, as the friendly police officer visit to our school system. Um, you know, we want our kids to get to know the police officers, we want the police officers to get to know our kids, we want them to do presentations and, and, and just be friendly faces around the district. Um, and so the Anthony's have been around, uh, they are young and adorable, um, but we are, uh, we're happy to have their presence.
Just, where are you going with that? I had an opportunity to speak to one of the Anthony's, I'm not sure which one, at the open house.
By the way, they don't mind being called the Anthony's, just.
Um, and, and he was great, and he was really on the topic for, like, he, his stuff, so I was like, okay, I'm not gonna mess with the Anthony's.
Um, two last things, we, um, for a second year in a row, the Cravita Top Schools list came out, and Baldwin High School was number one in Nassau County. Baldwin High School was also number one overall, and Baldwin Middle School was number three in Nassau County, and that's for every single district in the county. And lastly, I'm sure, um, some of the board members will discuss it, so I won't go into detail, but we had the first Baldwin Open House, it was very well-received, kudos to the Civic Association, and to Claudia, Rotundo, and, and all of the organizations that participated. Um, but it was really a good opportunity to, honestly, to brand. Um, our community organizations got to brand about, um, the amazing resources in Baldwin, and our school system, um, really did a nice job showing off at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, of the types of programs that we have, and the people that, that, you know, we're proud to call, um, you know, our Baldwin family, really share, uh, what's going on in our schools. Um, it, it was, it was a great day, and, um, and kudos to all those who participated and came to visit. I have to also say that it was pretty fun riding in the Fire Chief's car, going down Grand Avenue, but I guess that's the kid in me, right? So, that's, that's my report.
Okay. Um, I want to. All right, uh, comments and reports from the Board of Education, if anyone on the board here would like to share, if you started there, on the left last time, we started down there. And Mrs. Reed?
So, it's been a very busy month, and I anticipate it being even busier as we go into spring. Um, we have more spring concerts coming up, different awards ceremonies, award ceremonies, mentor-mentee breakfasts. But, the things that I can, I did go see Hairspray, phenomenal job, the kids were fantastic, and, it was so good that my daughter was like, Mom, we gotta go home and watch the video. I sat at DVR, we haven't watched it yet, but, it was really, the kids were phenomenal, so, it's a really good job. Um, I also had the opportunity to go to the event that was held the Friday, that Commissioner Aaliyah was in Baldwin, and Roger Tillis were in Baldwin, and I have to tell you, that the meeting was very informative, there was a lot of discussion about college and career readiness, um, it was nice to be in the audience to hear, of course, that Baldwin is ahead of the curve, and a model for what needs to be, what should be happening in schools in terms of career and college readiness. It's also interesting, they talked about, there were many different things they talked about, they talked about, um, it being a moving target, you know, people say, let's be college and career readiness, and then you ask people to define that, and you get like, five different definitions as to what that is. So it was nice to get this cohort of, um, Long Island administrators, superintendents, and then there were college teachers, and, but, you know, what killed me was the fact that, you have a K-12 environment, you have many colleges on Long Island, and they weren't talking. It kind of blows you away that you're preparing kids to go to college, but, we don't have a conversation, or we have not, prior to now, had a conversation about what we should be doing to prepare kids to come in for college. So it was a, a very, um, interesting workshop, and I really enjoyed it. Um, and, Steel School, I was at both of their spring concerts, love going to Steel School's concerts there quick, and, and if you blink, you might miss it. Um, and I was at Meadow as well, their three-to-five concert, and again, the kids are phenomenal, we have great, um, staff in terms of music education, and it's nice to see the, the end product, so, I think that's all I have to report for now.
Um, I had an opportunity to go to a breakfast that was held by Ingerman Smith, and really the focus was talking about providing equal education opportunities to all children regardless of their, um, immigration status, and what was really interesting for me was just to hear about, you know, I think we're all aware of a lot of changes going on in terms of the current administration, but, we've talked a lot about DACA and how the district should be better prepared to be aware of their, um, ICE, so that's National Immigration and Customs Enforcement, agencies popping up at different districts, and how districts can handle, um, if they have a warrant or not, how they should respond to questions that are being asked about students in terms of their immigration status. It's really more so about knowing the rights and being prepared and staying very aware of what's going on in, in our country, just to know that there are a lot of executive orders coming out of different places, and what this means, um, for immigrants, and there's some things that they're working on now, but, we'll see what that means. So it was more just to say, this is what's going on, and how do you handle what's going on, how do you handle as a district, um, this immigration issue, and how ICE is more involved under the current administration? So that was, um, an opportunity for me to hear about that. Uh, I actually got to go to Edward Siderhand, um, I said Edward, did I say Edward? Edma, what did I just say? Oh, okay, Edward Sider, uh, sorry about that. Um, and that was small crowd, but it was definitely always proud of our, uh, students to see how they perform, it was a great opportunity for those who may not be able to participate in the larger productions, um, that was also a great opportunity. And, um, last week, highlight for me, uh, got to go to Brookside and be the secret reader for fourth grade class and the, uh, kindergarten class, and what was great is that both my kids were in there, they didn't know that I was coming, so I was, it was more of a nerve wracker for me to, to read to them, because my fourth grader is at that stage where, um, trying to impress her, and she was like, Mom, what book did you pick? Please, please, I hope it's not boring, I hope you didn't put the kindergarten book stuff. I did well, so that was, um, yeah, thumbs up on that, and they were happy.
I was just, I say, I went to Brookside also and did the secret reading for fifth grade, and it's really interesting, because I started reading the book, and I had pictures in it, and the teacher reminded, she's like, um, the students like pictures too, so I was so excited to read and, and share with them the story, that I forgot my old teaching, and she's holding the book up to show the pictures, but, it was a really great experience. I've gone in before and I've done like, the element of younger kids, so it was neat to do fifth grade.
Um, just to add to what was said about Hairspray, anyone who did not have an opportunity to see it, you will definitely be able to see those. to see it, you will definitely be able to see those children in, when they get to the high school, because they are definitely going to be, they're the stars of the future, and they were really terrific professionals, if we can begin to talk about it. Um, this morning, I chaired, um, a meeting of the Long Island Education Coalition, and just very briefly, a couple of things that we talked about. One, um, we were talking about the, the impact, the continuing impact of the tax levy cap, and one of the things, uh, that, one of the issues that was raised is, one result, is the lower voter turnout, uh, that each year we think that we have the cap, there are fewer and fewer people who bother to vote. I think, uh, people feel that they don't have that much control, and in fact, uh, this year, at this point, there are no districts on Long Island that are attempting to pierce the cap. Uh, the majority of districts are putting out budgets that are just at whatever cap their individual district has. So, apparently, the, the feeling is by a lot of community people that they, that they've lost the opportunity to really have that back-and-forth dialogue with the budget, and that's, that's unfortunate when there's so much, um, else going on, not only the election of board members, but there are certainly issues that need to be discussed and need to be, we need to hear the voices of the community, so that, that's unfortunate. The other thing that we had a lengthy conversation about was recovery schools. Uh, there's actually legislation that is, um, been introduced in one of the houses in the state, and they're looking for a cosponsor, um, for, I believe, five statewide. Uh, there is unfortunately no funding attached to that, surprise, surprise. But, uh, these are, um, schools that would be run through the BOCs, and they are specifically for students who have an opioid addiction. Uh, that's been in the table a lot, that, that is a real tragedy for Long Island and so many other parts of the country. And the idea is that these students need a lot more, uh, support, uh, both mental health support, psychological support, uh, as well as the academics, so that there's, uh, at least, uh, some discussion and, and, oh, legislation introduced to create these schools specifically to deal with some of these young people. So, that was, that's it.
Okay, so, I also attended Hairspray Junior. It was absolutely amazing. So proud of our kids. Now, the open house, the Baldwin Community Open House that was held at the high school, what a great event. We really, between all of our civic organizations and our students, our, our staff, what a good showing, and it was a very proud day, and I really hope that we can continue this event every year, because this was the first time, and, you know, there were some growing pains and some figuring out of, of exactly how this should and shouldn't go. So, with every year that we do it, it would improve and become a much larger event, and certainly, as, as always, we are a model for other communities. So, that was a great event. And I, I too, um, participated in the park reading at Brookside, and the kids were great. I actually read two books, and the teacher was kind enough to wait until I was done to, uh, to tell me that the actual author of one of the books had come there and not only read the book to the kids, but performed it. So, I, I'm sure, you know, the kids were so kind, but I'm sure they were thinking that was, uh, a bit of a letdown after they got the performance, but it, it was a great experience. And I'm very, very proud of everything going on, not only in our school district, but our community. We have a lot of great things going on, and for anybody who doesn't know my profession, I'm a real estate agent, and the open houses that we are having every weekend are packed. We have multiple offers on every house, and families are so excited to come into our community, and I'm so proud to be a part of this. So, thank you to everybody and all of your hard work.
All right, um, I will be brief, given the, the hour, and we've got stuff to do. Um, I was at Hairspray, just, uh, I guess we were all there. Um, fabulous show. Um, and I, you know, I always, every year, when the students at the high school graduate, I always wonder, "Oh, my gosh, who are we gonna get to play these roles in the future?" But, but there were just so many talented kids there, so that was great. Um, I also was at Edmund Scissorhands, a very interesting, um, show. Um, there's another student production coming up in the, within the next month, I don't know the date of that. Um, open house was great, and the ceremony honoring the girls' basketball team was just fabulous, and, uh, and the parade was, it was great. I'm only, sorry, I wasn't on the team, so I could ride on the fire truck. Um, I was at the Meadow Spring Concert, um, that, uh, one of the Meadow concerts, uh, that was terrific, that such a strong music department down there at Meadow, really speaks highly of the teachers down there and the kids. Um, and actually, stepping back with the open house, um, I, I did want to, you know, I wanted to thank everyone who helped arrange it, um, but also the teachers and the administrators who showed up that day to represent, did an incredible job doing that, so kudos to them. Um, with regards to the commissioner's visit here to Baldwin, I, I was in another district, and they were like, "The commissioner's in Baldwin, did you know that?" And I said, "Yeah." I said, "Yeah," like, "I wouldn't know that." And, and they were like, I said, "And, and so was Commissioner, um, Regent Tillis, and this is the second time he's been there in a month." And I'm like, "Really?" Yeah. Um, and then, uh, just, you know, I have a, I have a high school junior and a freshman also, but, so I get to hearing from people, uh, from my daughter about, she's got friends that are seniors, um, and the schools that the seniors are getting into this year, um, it's incredible, and they have, now, the hard part of choosing between all these great schools that they're getting into, so I just wanted to share that, because I'm just hearing that a lot from parents. So, that was, was all I, I wanted to share. Um, we are now, so moving on, we're at the point in our agenda for our first comment and question period. Um, it usually says this in the agenda, but it doesn't. Um, this first period is for questions and comments related strictly to items that were on the agenda, um, so you can discuss any of that. Uh, we have a second comment period, uh, after our, the business portion of the meeting, which, uh, the, the subject matter there is not limited, but this section is for, strictly for agenda items. Uh, the comment period is limited to no more than thirty minutes. Um, everyone gets a chance to ask, uh, well, to get up to the mic once for up to three minutes, and, uh, you get up, give us your name and address, um, address your questions to me, and we ask if you do have questions or comments, um, any concerns, uh, that you bring them up, uh, in a respectful manner. Uh, we do not talk about individual students or staff members, uh, in public, so please don't bring up questions related to that. There are other methods of addressing those issues. And with that, I will open up the floor. There's no mic there, is the mic up there? Okay, the mic is up at the podium, if anyone has any questions or comments.
Is the mic on yet? Hi, hello? Um, my concern, um, coming here tonight again, is, um, as a taxpayer to this town, um, it just seems like gradual increase this year or figure. Based on the studies which, which is shown tonight, which I have been looking at personally year after year as well, um, showing how we have less residents contributing to the calculated budget, we have less students as well. Um, two thousand ten, we were at fifty-three hundred students, now we have forty-two hundred, forty-six hundred, um, eight hundred, one hundred, and again, I have been looking at this as well. Um, not saying that we should eliminate our programs, that we don't have great programs in our schools, I mean, effectively, love the fact that these kids are doing so, so well, but as a tax...